And welcome. Before we begin our final board meeting of 2021, I'd like to take a few moments to thank everyone for your hard work this school year. We are still in the midst of a pandemic and this poses significant challenges to our district and schools, but our employees and leadership have done a wonderful job keeping our schools safe and protecting the health of our students and staff. The holiday season is the perfect time for us to express our gratitude for all of our employees for this district, what our employees do for this district. On behalf of myself and my fellow trustees, we are truly grateful to have you on our team. And we send the entire Isleta ISD community our warmest wishes for a happy, safe, and healthy holiday season. Thank you. Before we proceed, I'd like to briefly turn the meeting over to one of our outstanding students who will receive the president's award tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome to the diocese, Gracie Diaz from Scottsdale Elementary School.
Thank you, President Ochoa, and good evening. My name is Gracie Diaz and I am student council president at Scottsdale Elementary School. It is my honor to call this meeting to order. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to Isleta Independent School District's meeting of the Board of Trustees. The meeting of the Board of Trustees is a meeting of the board that the public is allowed to attend as provided Isleta ISD policy BED, we invite members of the public to make comment during the citizens input portion of the start of the meeting according to the instructions provided with the electronic posting notice of our meeting. Legally, the board may listen but may not enter into discussion on matters in the citizens' input. We remind everyone that this is a board meeting often attended by students and ask that we conduct ourselves in a manner that best represents the values and traditions of the Isleta Independent School District. This meeting of the Board of Trustees is called to order at 6:04 PM. We have a quorum with Charlie Bustillos, Soltero Ramirez, Mike Rosales, Catherine Lucero, and myself, Cruz Ochoa. Shane Hagerty and Connie Woodruff are unable to attend but are excused. Secretary Lucero, read your color.
The colors tonight are being presented by the junior ROTC color guard from Del Valle High School. The color guard commander is Cadet Command Sergeant Major Angel Vasquez. The other color guard members are Cadet First Lieutenant Miguel Flores, Cadet Sergeant Angel Romero, Cadet Corporal Brandon Samaripa. The pledge leader is Cadet Umberto Villalobos from Del Valle High School Junior ROTC. Will you please stand for the presentation of the colors, the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance, the Texas Pledge of Allegiance, and a moment of silence? Please remain standing until the cadets have departed. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now, please join me in the pledge to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Dr. De La Torre, do we have recognitions and introductions this evening?
President Ochoa, members of the board, we do. I will note, however, that under recognitions and introductions, item three, the 2021 District 148 Division One Coach of the Year is being pulled as we've received additional information that compels us to revisit coach recorder in January. Daniel, please.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. De La Torre. We have two recognitions for you this evening. For safety and health reasons, we only invite President Ochoa and Superintendent Dr. De La Torre to please join us in front of the dais for the presentation. We invite other members of the board to please stand in place behind the dais. Audience members, please remain seated until the recognition is complete. Thank you. Our first recognition is in honor of the Scottsdale Elementary School Student Council, which demonstrated great leadership and service this holiday season with a kind and compassionate commitment to help others in need throughout the El Paso community. The student council, which is made up of fourth, fifth, and sixth graders, partnered with the Salvation Army to challenge students and the Scottsdale community to collect 200 pairs of socks for the homeless this winter. And over the course of only two weeks, the student council was able to collect more than 1,100 pairs of socks, far exceeding everyone's expectations. The Scottsdale Elementary School Student Council not only embodies the values of Isleta ISD, but they routinely put those values into action for the betterment of others. They are a wonderful example of the service excellence we highlight at the district and we honor them with the December 2021 President's Award. Ladies and gentlemen, here to represent the Scottsdale Elementary School Student Council Vice President Julian Jimenez, Historian Avi Bella Kell, and Secretary Rafael Humberson. They are accompanied by student council teachers Sandra Garcia and Yvonne Hutterer, and their principal Juan Guzman. Let's hear it one more time for the Scottsdale Student Council. Tonight's final recognition is in honor of two exceptional marching bands from Bel Air and Hanks High Schools that qualified for the 5A UIL State Championships this year, a remarkable feat in light of a challenging year of pandemic school closures that not only saw diminished band participation numbers, but new adjustments to rehearsal schedules to accommodate the year-round school calendar. The marching bands qualified for state after being named among the top five finalists at the area competition, which took place in Odessa in October. At the area competition, Hanks High School won first place and was named the area champion, while Bel Air High School placed fifth. At the state championships, Hanks High School placed 24th, while Bel Air High School, the smallest marching band in the competition with just over 100 students, placed 32nd. This is the third consecutive time both of these bands have achieved this amazing accomplishment at state, and we commend them on their extraordinary dedication, hard work, and talent. Ladies and gentlemen, here to accept tonight's recognition on behalf of the Bel Air High School Big Red Pride Marching Band are Drum Major Alizé Nevares, Flag Captain Jaslyn Soto, Front Line Section Leader Jamie Aranda, Center Snare Jacob Cabral, Flute Soloist Angelí Martinez, Saxophone Soloist Michael Macias, Marching Band Director Manny Talamantes, and Principal Jake Valtiera. Let's hear it again for the Bel Air High School Big Red Pride Marching Band. Lastly, here to accept tonight's recognition on behalf of the JM Hanks High School Marching Band are Drum Majors Anna Rodriguez, and Gabby Carrasco, Dance Captains Emily Hidalgo, and Natalia Baltazar, and Principal Ruben Cadenas. Let's hear it again for the Hanks High School Marching Band. Mr. Horacio's Gómez's birthday was yesterday, so celebration to him.
Thank you very much, Mr. Martinez. Secretary Lucero, do we have citizen input this evening?
Yes, we do. Yes, just one of us? Do you mind if they start first and I end it? Well, take turns.
My name is Daniel De La Cruz. Are speaking here is regarding the transition of the audiovisual program at the Career Center into Riverside elective. What exactly does this mean? It means that this three-hour course will be shortened and made only available to Riverside students. Closing this program off from other students from different schools is depriving other students of an excellent and thoroughly taught class. This is depriving of certifications and proper job and life training with hands-on experience and the best teacher with years of work experience. This class is unlike any other class I've had claiming to provide real-world practice, and the moving of this class shortens it and regards it almost useless, in my opinion.
A topic I wanted to bring up was the time being shortened because from my understanding, it's going to be 60 to 90 minutes, which is not a lot of time to do anything. When we work with workforce, they, it could take up to an hour to get a few scenes done, meaning we wouldn't be able to get to the real-world experience and we'd have to focus on our program more or on our projects more. And that's, we don't really get actual experience. In our projects, if we have like a two-day project, it could take up to four days at that point if you add the time together. And if we have a two-week or a one-week project, it could take up to two weeks, which uses a lot, a lot of time.
I don't know if this, I don't want to continue into this minute, but another three minutes for myself, if that's fine. Okay, so hi, I'm Melissa Voight. I'm also a student at, I'm a student at Bel Air High School, but I go to Riverside in the morning for three hours to join the class of audio and video production. These two students behind me, Martine and Daniel, they are Riverside students and they have chose to join this, they have joined this class, this three-hour class, and it has been mentioned that this program is going to be taken away from the Career Center, it's going to be moved into the Riverside portion as an elective. I've, what I've understood, it's going to be an elective now for freshmen, sophomore, juniors, and seniors. Now, there's a reason why it's a junior and senior class. There's a reason why it's a three-hour course. It's because we have multiple lessons within one day. We're able to get through a video lesson, go through notes, go in the studio. It's really hands-on. We go to Isleta for dance recitals. We do lots of charity work and along with charity work, we're, we have Skills USA, which is not at any other school. So the argument here is that we have audio and video classes at every other school. There's an AV class at Hanks, at, at Bel Air, at Eastwood, but I was unaware of my own AV class at Bel Air High School because there's not a lot of attention brought to it. There's not funding. We're focused on other things, and if you really were concerned with the students, you would leave this class here. And it's the same with, okay, so I was in the health professions at Bel Air, and if the argument is that, well, there's an AV class everywhere else, everywhere else in every other school, then why isn't the health professions at every other school for every other student to join and experience? Why isn't culinary, which is at the careers center at Riverside, also at every other school? So there's just so many things, so many reasons why this program needs to stay at the Career Center. It needs to stay three hours long. With Skills USA, I know that's not there at Bel Air, and we also work with Workforce Solutions with Chuck DeBroder. We do Workforce Wednesdays. We get paid for that. We get paid for Isleta dance recitals. We do a lot of work that isn't done at Bel Air or Isleta or at Hanks. It's not done there. And there's, we have a lot of time and with the three hours and everything Mr. V, our teacher, has done for us, he has worked this program from the bottom up. And I just have to mention that you can't replicate this at any other school. And if you are, then fund those programs. Make it as amazing and robust as it is at Riverside. Make it great where we have the equipment, we have the time, and if not, I believe we should keep it where it is at the Career Center because you can't create that same atmosphere with different students, three-hour course, and everything we do at every other school. So thank you for listening and I hope you consider keeping it there. Thank you.
So Ms. Voight and Daniel De La Cruz, are you guys all together then? Is that right? Okay, just wanted to make sure I got everybody. Thank you, guys.
We will now open the public hearing. Dr. De La Torre, will you lead us into the public hearing?
Yes, President Ochoa, members of the board, every year we're required to make a presentation, so at this time I'd like to invite our chief financial and operational officer to provide the report on school first.
Good evening, President Ochoa, members of the board, and Dr. De La Torre. As was just mentioned, every year we provide a summary of this report. It's formally known as the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. We call it the first report. It compares the last two years of fiscal information. It requires additional disclosures related to the superintendent and board members, also includes this public hearing, which we're holding this evening, and I'm proud to report that once again, since inception in 2004, Isleta ISD has received the highest rating of superior achievement. There are some new things in this year's report as compared to last year's. Some of the point scales and ratings are different, and there are now 20 adopted indicators as opposed to 15 in the past. As I mentioned, superior achievement is equivalent to an A. It requires at least 90 of 100 points be earned by the district. The change in the point values occurred in what it takes to meet the C or standard achievement. You can see that this year a minimum of 70 points are required as opposed to 60 points in the past. And I'll point out, if there, if you fail any one of the indicators, one through five, you automatically fail the entire rating system. So you must achieve the one through five indicators with a positive result, or you fail automatically regardless of what your other indicators may say. And so this year, we earned 92 out of 100 points as opposed to 98 out of 100 in the past. Part of that is related to long-term debt. As you know, with two significant bond referendums, our long-term debt is approaching the cap set by the Attorney General. Those indicators are referenced actually on slides 20 and 21, and the second indicator, number 12, we also earned six out of 10 points on it. It is a measure of the long-term debt compared to the property values assessed in our district. And so on both of those, we scored slightly less, six out of 10 points instead of 10 out of 10. These required disclosures are published on our financial transparency page. They include the superintendent's contract, reimbursements received by either board members or the superintendent, any outside compensation received by the superintendent for professional consulting is listed there, as well as gifts that might have been received by executive officers and board members, along with business transactions between the district and board members. Each of those is linked. This presentation is included in the published agenda, and the entire presentation will be available on the financial transparency page as of tomorrow. The individual indicators, we usually don't go through these, they're very lengthy and time-consuming, but they are available online for the public and you in your board packet. And with that, I'll take any questions. No? Okay.
Secretary Lucero, do we have anyone signed up for public comment on the school first?
No, we don't. President Ochoa.
Thank you. Thank you. We will now close the public hearing and continue with our board workshop. Dr. De La Torre, do you have any reports for us this evening?
Yes, President Ochoa, members of the board, esteemed guests, we begin with Mrs. Lindley Leaper and our monthly report on COVID-19.
So I'm sure it will be no surprise to you when I show you that our COVID indicators demonstrate we are back in Code Red. I will point out, though, that the trauma service area hospitalization rate remains at 19.3%, and this is measuring the prior two weeks. It's not surprising, but the TSA hospitalization is the primary indicator used by TEA and the Governor's Office to determine when a community is reaching risk levels that are unacceptable. So we've been here for about 14 days, but I'd like to demonstrate how these past 14 days are nothing compared to October 2020 and November 2020. As you can see in the top graph, the new daily COVID cases are our seven-day rolling average in October 2020 was approaching 2,000 a day. In October of 2021, we are just
In October of 2021, we are just slightly above five hundred per day. And so, although it is increasing, it is not increasing at nearly the same pace or levels that it was in the prior year. You can also see the hospitalization rate there for the same timeframe, October 20 to roughly January 2021, when it started to come down, compared to October 2021. We are just now approaching twenty percent, last year, we were at fifty-five percent. So, we are nowhere near those levels, although we do see positive cases increasing. I will point out that while we navigate between TEA and Governor Abbott's rulings about no mask, we are at the same time following Dr. Okaranza's guidance, which says, get vaccinated. Provide the vaccination to as many people in as many places as you possibly can. And with that, I can tell you that we will roll out our second round of immunizations for any child age five and older, along with any adult or community member who might want to come and get any one of the doses, so they could have their first, second, or booster. This is free to the community, the only thing we ask that they do is pre-register, just because they have screening questions they must answer, but even if they don't do that, if they show up, we help them register at the site. We will conduct this just like we did in November, a six-day rotation from three to five PM at every single elementary school, over that six-day period, we divide them up. And then, there are several middle schools where they serve children that might be eleven years old. So, we will have it at select middle schools and every elementary. The sites operate from three to five PM, I can tell you that at the sites I worked, we were there a little bit later than five PM, just to accommodate those who were late arrivals. Immunize El Paso has been phenomenal in the partnership with us, and we really appreciate their help, they have gone, they've been over backwards at every location where I've worked with them. We will, again, do, we actually sent out the first notice today, we will send out two more notices as we get closer to the timeframe when the vaccines will be made available again. It includes callouts, flyers, registration links, and blackboard and Peach Star. So, we are covering a multitude of avenues to make sure the public is aware. And with that, I can take questions.
And the, informing the public where these sites are going to be, are we going to put it on our website as well?
Yes, sir.
All right. I, I must say that I, I got, had two opportunities to, to, to get my, my own booster shot, and then it went very, very smooth. You do have to pre-register, and they did help me. There, it's a little lengthy, but they helped me there, and it was, it ran real smoothly. And then, I took my two teenagers at a different time, and again, it went very smoothly, so I gotta say that we have to take advantage of this opportunities to get ourselves immunized as, as well. So, hopefully, all our public, not only it is led up at every, along the city, will take advantage of this opportunity.
We hope so.
Thank you, thank you, the great work they're doing.
Thank you.
I'd just like to piggyback off that, I, I went to the Young Women's Leadership Academy and got my booster shot. Chief Liston was out there, and he did a great job helping me out, fill out the paperwork. Thank you for that. Took ten minutes, fairly easy, in and out, so highly recommended.
We have a great team out there, our nurses, school administrators, chief of security, OEM director, associate superintendent, parent pupil services director, so they've got a lot of people out there supporting the effort, and they've done a great job. Okay, thank you.
Our second report surrounds the emergent bilinguals program update, also required annually. I'll ask Dr. Brenda Chacon to come forward, where you just, so you can at least introduce your team.
Good evening, Dr. De La Torre, President Ochoa, members of the board. Tonight, we are here to share with you our emergent bilingual, that term just changed, they used to be ELs, they've gone from ELLs to EL, to this recent legislative change to emergent bilinguals. We have a new interim director for the ALPS department that I'd like to introduce, Ms. Ana Esquera, and presenting the information today will be Travis Monroy, he is our coordinator for the ALPS department. So, I have them both right here, Ana and Travis, so without further ado, I will have handed over to Travis.
Well, good evening. As Dr. Chacon and Dr. De La Torre mentioned, the presentation of this evaluation fulfills our requirements as outlined in Texas Administrative Code, Chapter eighty-nine, to provide an annual report of our evaluation to our school board. The different data elements that we're going to be looking at, again, are outlined in Chapter eighty-nine, and so this presentation and the data that we're addressing tonight fulfills those requirements. All right, so our first data element that we're going to look at is our STAR performance. We're going to look at this through the performance levels of the approaches grade level or above, and then in subsequent slides, we'll be looking at the percentage of our students who performed at the MEATs grade level, and then again, and the master's grade level. What you'll see is, there's an asterisk note here, the data that we're going to be looking at is the 2019 STAR data compared to the 2021 STAR data, and that, just as a quick reminder, is due to the fact that the 2019, 2020 STAR testing program was canceled due to COVID, school closures due to COVID. And so therefore, the 2018 and 19 STAR data is used for comparison. As you're looking at this slide here, again, this is our approaches grade level, our percentage of our emergent bilingual students who performed at the approaches grade level or above level. Across the board, you're going to see significant drops in our performance, ranging from about eighteen percent to approximately thirty-five percent, or thirty-four percent, depending on the content area that you're looking at. The drops that we experienced here in our district is not unique to just our emergent bilingual population, nor is it unique to the Isleta Independent School District or Region Nineteen. These are drops that were, that the entire state experienced, and we attribute a large percentage of, or a large cause of the, of these drops to, of course, the remote learning environment and the different challenges that were presented during the COVID-19 closure, school closures and whatnot. So, as we, if we look at our historical data, we've actually had a trend to where our percentages of, of students at the approaches grade level meeting, or, of meeting the approaches grade level, or the MEATs grade level, or the master's grade level, to where there was a consistent gain over the last few years, as compared to what we're looking at here. As we move forward in our presentation, the next slide is going to have our MEATs, our MEATs grade level or above, and again, we're seeing some drops from our 2018, 19 data to our 2020, 21, again, with the cancellation of the 2020 STAR testing program, there will not, there's no data to compare there. The drops that you see here range anywhere from thirty-two percent in mathematics to a kind of less significant drop, such as eighteen percent in our writing scores. Moving forward to our percentage of students who performed at the master's grade level, the drops aren't quite as significant, and, and of course, due to the number of students who are meeting at the, or performing at the master's grade level. We did have a pretty significant drop in our mathematics, you'll see that it was approximately, excuse me, eighteen percent in our passing rates, or at the master's grade level rate. And then, aside from that, we had an eight percent drop in writing, but aside from that, it was about five percent across the board. Looking at our TELPASS summary, our second data indicator that we're, that we're going to report on, on the Spring 2021 TELPASS administration, that first bulleted item, we see that eighteen percent of our, of our emergent bilingual students who participated in our bilingual education or ESL programs were rated as advanced high in TELPASS composite ratings. This does include all students in grades pre-K, I'm sorry, in grades kindergarten through twelve, who are evaluated on TELPASS. So, with the understanding that our programs are designed to prepare students to exit or reclassify as English proficient after five to seven years. And so, this number will always kind of tend, eighteen percent looks low, but just remember that it, it includes the thousands of kids who are in our early grade levels, who have yet to, to attend school, or to participate in our programs to, for those five to seven years. The second bullet refers to, oh, we can go back, thank you, ma'am. On the Spring 2021 TELPASS administration, you'll see forty percent of our YISD emergent bilingual students in our bilingual education or ESL programs progressed at least one proficiency level, or maintained an advanced high rating, which is the highest rating you can achieve in our TELPASS. So, forty percent of our kids progressed at least one level or maintained the advanced high rating in our TELPASS composite ratings as compared to the Spring 2020 TELPASS administration. This, our state target that we're supposed to hit is thirty-six percent, and so, even given the, the challenges of the, of the remote learning, of the year that we had in remote learning, our emergent bilingual students, we did hit that state target or actually exceed it, as far as progress is concerned. The next data piece on our following slide that we're going to look at is our reclassification data. Excuse me, the reclassification data, what, what, one of our ultimate goals in our, in our bilingual and ESL programs is to ensure that our students are graduating as English, are identified as English proficient students. We, previous to, the data that you see here is a four-year comprehensive look at the number of students who met the reclassification criteria. Previous to the 2017, 18 school year, we were averaging approximately about a thousand fifty to eleven hundred students who were meeting reclassification on an annual basis. That number represented approximately eleven to twelve percent of our total ESL, or I'm sorry, English emergent bilingual student population. What changed in the 17, 18 school year is, is the testing format itself of TELPASS. The listening and speaking in particular, those two domains, at previous to 2017, 18, were holistically rated domains by our teachers throughout the district and throughout our state of Texas. Beginning in the 17, 18 school year, the TELPASS listening and speaking test was moved to an online testing format, to where it was scored using algorithms that the state has, or that Pearson has developed. If, if you'll see over what our, our trends, or we were trending, if you'll see, we, we were progressing as our students became more comfortable with the test format, as our teachers became, or developed their understanding of the test itself and how students are tested now on TELPASS, and you can see that we'd been trending up and, and gaining, or increasing the number of students who met reclassification at the end of each school year. Last year, again, in our, in our year of remote learning, we did experience a drop of approximately a hundred twenty-four students, and again, this breaks the three-year trend in which we were, or two-year trend in which we were progressing well with this. Again, this can be attributed in large part to the remote learning environment and the, the differences in the changes in the language practice opportunities that our students were given and were able to take advantage of in our instructional programs. Moving forward, our teacher certification requirements. Our teachers who serve our emergent bilingual students who have parent permission to participate in our bilingual program, or our ESL program, have certain teacher certification requirements that they have to adhere to. If you look at our 2020, 2021 bilingual exception at the top of our slide, you'll see that in last school year, our district applied for a bilingual exception on behalf of forty-nine teachers district-wide. And as of November first of 2021, thirty-one of those forty-nine teachers had passed the appropriate certification test and applied for their bilingual or ESL certificate as, as applicable. Last year, with the ESL waiver, and again, this is related to certification requirements for our teachers who are teaching in our ESL programs, you'll see that in 2021, the Isleta Independent School District applied for an ESL waiver on behalf of fifty-one teachers, and as of November first of this school year, twenty-seven of those fifty-one teachers had passed the appropriate certification test and applied for their ESL certificate. We do have record of, of other teachers who have passed the bilingual or ESL certification tests as required, but they have yet to add these certificates to their license, and so they're not included in this count. Moving forward into this school year, you'll see that for this school year, our district has applied for a bilingual exception on behalf of seventy-two teachers district-wide, and we applied for an ESL waiver on behalf of twenty-four teachers district-wide. When it comes to a teacher certification, when we look at it over the course of the last few years, since there was a change in Chapter eighty-nine in July of 2018 that required teachers, that changed our teacher certification requirements for our bilingual and our ESL programs in the state of Texas, the ninety-six teachers that we applied for here, it does, it does seem like a lot of teachers perhaps, but we have to understand that this number has decreased from approximately four hundred teachers three years ago, when we, when the rule changes first came to now. So, we've done a really good job of getting our teachers certified and helping them build the capacity to meet the needs of our English, or I'm sorry, of our emergent bilingual students. The final piece of data that we are going to present tonight is our bilingual exception ESL waiver professional development plan. What you're seeing on the left-hand side are the professional development sessions that our department has provided, and then you'll see the different session topics. Of course, these are kind of general umbrella topics that we're seeing on the left-hand side, that the trainings that we have provided last year fall into those different categories. In the middle column, you'll see the number of sessions that we offered, you'll see some of those numbers, for example, for foundational reading skills, you'll see eighty-eight sessions. A lot of these sessions included after-school make-and-take type sessions, after-school trainings, and then Saturday trainings as well that our teachers attended. In the last column, you'll see the number of participants, the summative total of our participants who attended those different types of professional development. On the right-hand side, the Chapter eighty-nine bilingual exception ESL waiver, for our teachers who are on the bilingual exception or the ESL waiver in a given school year, they're required to, to complete certain professional development requirements that we develop locally. Those requirements include certification test preparation for either ESL certification or bilingual certification, depending on which test or which certification the teacher is lacking, and then the shelter and instruction training. You'll see the number of sessions there, the number of participants. If you add up the number of participants, it's not going to equate to the number of teachers who we applied for an exception or a waiver for last year. And the reason being is because in March of 2020, when we had the shutdown, the shutdown also included our testing centers, and so a number of teachers who were on our bilingual exception or ESL waiver in the nineteen, twenty school year were not able to, they had attended our trainings, or the required trainings, but they were not able to, to take their tests because the testing centers had been closed. In response to that, the state allowed school districts to include teachers who were on the ESL waiver or bilingual exception during the nineteen, twenty school year, but were not able to secure their certifications by the end of that, by the end of that school year, to again, include them in our 2021 application, if you will. And so therefore, a number of the teachers who were on our bilingual exception application or ESL waiver application in the previous year had already fulfilled their training requirements and then spent the year, as the testing centers began to open up, securing their certification. Okay, so that's, that's kind of why the numbers are a little low on our participation from, from last year, as compared to previous years. This completes, this data piece completes the, the components of our required annual evaluation. Of course, as Dr. Chacon said, we do have our interim director, Ana Esquera, here as well, and then our department members as well. At this time, I'd like to open it up for questions.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Can you go back to the STAR slides? I just have a question, what grade levels did we conduct our STAR testing on?
The data that you're looking at here is grades three through, well, it's grades three through eight, and then it also includes our end-of-course tests, which, you know, for our English one, English two, and then the algebra one.
Those were just recently completed, weren't they? EOCs for the?
The EOCs were completed in the spring of last school year. Yes, sir. And then, what's happening, what was just most recently completed, like last week, was our retesting. And that data is not reflected in here, because that counts, the, the testing calendar was changed, I want to say maybe two or three years ago. It used to be January to December, like to match the calendar year, but now it matches our, our school year. And so, our testing year actually runs from August until July. And so, that data from the December testing won't be included here.
Okay. Looking at the data, what grade levels you think is going to be more challenging for us to, to break up to the numbers that it was before?
I think, I think the challenge is kind of across the board. Historically, our seventh grade numbers have been, I guess, relatively low compared to other grade levels, as far as our performance. But really, the work, the, the work to kind of make up for these gain, for these drops, if you will, is really a K through twelve issue, and it is something that we've partnered with our K through eight academics team, our high school academics team, our special education department, and we've, we've really come together to, and also our RTI team, to ensure that we're identifying student gaps that have been developed over the last year and a half, and then implementing an instructional program that addresses those gaps directly.
Okay. Yeah, I was just talking to Dr. De La Torre, Hospital 4545 provides funding for some of that to, to, as intervention to helping these students achieve those goals. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And our campuses have worked to identify those students who are required to attend, or, you know, certain services and receive certain services, and, and our department has certainly been in support of that as well.
Okay. Now, moving on to TELPASS, what domains were we, what, were they tested on, reading, writing?
The, the four domains are reading, writing, listening, and speaking, and then we're also assigned a composite rating, and so what our accountability is actually based on is on that composite rating. The issue, well, I don't think issue is the right word, but the, 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 the one thing to keep in mind with this data is that if, in order to receive a composite rating, you have to to complete all four domains of testing. If you complete one or more but don't complete all of them, you don't get assigned a composite rating. And so we do have a number of students who last year chose, parents chose not to send their kids to school for the Telpass testing and therefore didn't participate. We also have a number of students who participated in perhaps one or one, two, or three of the domains of testing, but didn't complete all four.
Also, you mentioned that we went from the teachers conducting these Telpass tests in the classroom to online testing now. How is that working out?
That we, like I said, historically, as our students have become more familiar with that test, as our teachers have, as our administrators have, as we have as a department, and we've provided professional development on that test itself and how it's how it's built and how students are tested, we've also, then our next step was to provide professional development on how to incorporate language practice opportunities that hit, that address all four domains over the past year and a half or so. Now, the next step in our in our plan that we're implementing this year is how do we make sure that these language practice opportunities are systematic and that they're targeted and focused on student need? And so it's kind of been, in response to this change, it's kind of been kind of a three or four-year plan to get our students or to ensure that our students are prepared for this type of test.
On the online testing, you said that it's conducted using algorithms that they developed, whoever's providing that online testing. Have we done any cross-check to make sure on their accuracy or are they within the?
Every, 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 they're called TETNs, but every basic presentation that TA has provided, that their English learner support division has provided, their student assessment division has provided, they do provide the research and the study behind the test. It has every study that they've run on, it shows that it is a valid testing. One of, in fact, the last, second to last TETN that I attended, the TA represented likened it to, like when we're texting, for those of us who text, you know, the software's ability to predict what our next word is going to be, our next sentence and complete sentences and things of that sort. It's that same kind of approach that that makes a kind of a valid test that, you know, because the software has been developed to the point to where it's a pretty, it's a fairly accurate and reliable, it's a reliable and accurate language evaluator, if you will.
Okay. All right. Those are the only questions I had. But thank you, appreciate that.
I just want to say that it appears by the questions that Mr., our board president commented, we're following up to make sure that our children are having the support mechanisms being of what all we, they've encountered the COVID issue, and then you see these numbers. I'm encouraged by the fact that we're providing the support mechanisms for them. That, to me, is very important in terms of raising these numbers.
Yes, sir, without a doubt.
It's a big challenge, and I understand that. But we have to make sure that we continue being diligent because that's, that's very important to us.
Certainly. The issues that the pandemic has caused for our students is certainly not an excuse, but it has been what it has been. And with, but with that being said, our department, as well as our colleagues in academics and our special education departments, have really taken a proactive approach to, okay, so it is what it is, so now what do we do about it? And what do we do about it fast? Because our kids can't afford, you know, time is, time is of the essence. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Well, y'all have a good rest of the evening. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Champagne, I think you're next.
Good evening, Board President, Super, and all four members. This is Champagne. Good evening and happy holidays. Can I have this PowerPoint up? Am I supposed to put it up? While we're waiting for the PowerPoint, you do have the Audit Plan for 2022. It will be later, actually, item one. So maybe later you have a question and I can answer it. For this month's summary, since last monthly report, we have 21 active projects since last month, and up to this year, we have finished, for this month, 52 projects and the hotline reports as well. For during this month, we have issued two of the correction plans and 11 follow-up audit reports. When we issue follow-up report and we complete that project. And currently, we have eight projects from the current audit plan. It's ongoing. That concludes this monthly report. For Audit Plan 2022, there was one question about how many projects that we have completed from the audit plan that we have. So I did a little bit of math. In the initial audit plan that you all approved, we have 74 projects listed, not in detail, but in each project, 74 of them. Within these 74, we finished, meaning completed a whole project. Initial audit, cap report, follow-up audits, 52 of them. Four of them, we need to do follow-up in early next year because either they need more time to gather the data, or they were still working on some of the policies or the workflows, the readjustment with coordinate working with other departments. That's why it was not, and one project was ongoing, and the other one, the Edgar self-certification because we no longer need that, so we canceled that one. In addition to these 74, we have 28 exit audits. Add it to it, among those, we finished 24 of them. So in total, you should have received 89, at least 89 audit reports so far up to this year. I have to thank my team. I have my senior staff auditor, Amy Sanchez, here. Great leader, helped me a lot to, it's a very, I'm very grateful of HR help us to recruit this wonderful team. It's very cohesive and very dedicated to the audit work. And of course, all of your support, everybody's, all the administration support is very, very crucial for us to be able to get our project rolling and assist everybody in the, doing the process. Do you guys have any question?
You are going to stick around, right?
Yes, I will.
Okay, because we're going to have the audit plan here come up. Might have some more questions then.
Sure, yes.
Overall, I think we're pretty good right now, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much, and happy holidays. Thank you, Hector.
Thank you. We will now discuss the agenda items listed in the posted notice of the regular meeting of the Sleda ISD Board of Trustees for December 15, 2021, and related recommended motions with the Superintendent and Executive Cabinet, and receives responses to questions and/or requests for additional information through the Superintendent in preparation for deliberation and action on said items at the December 15, 2021 Regular Board of Trustees Meeting. As I go through this items, please stop me if you have any questions or wish to pull an item. Consent item number one, Board of Trustees Workshop and Regular Board Meeting, November 3, 2021, 6:00 p.m. Donation of Del Valle High School's girls' basketball team. Number three, monthly financial update as of October 2021. Item number four, 2022-2023 YSD instructional calendar.
I wanted to thank the folks who responded to my questions, references. I was incredibly pleased by the response that we got back from our, from our leadership, or from the folks, the teachers, the staff out there telling us that basically they liked the, they liked the new calendar. The only consistent negative that I heard was it was a short summer, you know, and I understand that. But also too, they're, they also were very complimentary about the fall intercession and how that makes a huge difference. And, and so I, again, I would like to congratulate the leadership, Dr. Delatorre and the cabinet and everyone who helped make that happen. And then the other part too, and I was just asked to express this to y'all, thank you all, even though we did tutoring that first week during fall intercession, at least we didn't have mandatory PD for our folks that week, and we showed respect to our, our staff by allowing them to take the time off if they needed to do that. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President, Board President, if we can go ahead and pull the agenda item number two, so we can have the opportunity to thank, thank you for the donation. Thank you.
Okay. Pulling.
Excuse me, which one?
Agenda item, the consent, agenda item number two. So I have the opportunity to thank Ms. Chavez formally.
Okay, thank you. Consent item number five, support for minor boundary modification of foreign trade zone number 68. Consent item number six, amendment to educational affiliation agreement with the University of Texas of El Paso for Teaching Residency Program. Okay. The policy items that remain will be taken as one vote. Please stop me if you have any, the policy items will be taken as one vote. Please stop me if you have a question or wish to pull an item. Policy item number one, revision of policy CFD Local Accounting Activity Funds Management. Number two, revisions of policy CQB Local Technology Resources Cybersecurity. Number three, revisions to policy DP Local Personnel Positions.
I'd like to comment. In the reading of the, in the board book, there was a discussion on changing the experience requirement for principals. I guess there's a requirement right now for three years, and then, and what you would do is eliminate that requirement for, I'm sorry, three years' classroom experience. Is that correct, Ms. Russell?
That is what the state is recommending. It doesn't necessarily mean that we have to adhere to that expectation. Our job descriptions still require at least two years' experience.
I'm sorry, how many years?
Our job description currently requires, I believe, two years' experience.
Two years' experience.
And if I may, what, what Tasby was recommending was that it move out of the policy into the job description. So they weren't opining on whether we should require that. They were just saying it should, it is better if it appears in the job description than in the policy.
Okay, just my interpretation of it, and I honestly, I didn't read the board book very late, was that, that's funny if you were paying attention. But if you, I was under the impression that they wanted to pull the experience, the classroom experience requirement for a principal, and that's the way I read it, and that's why I had such, I had such a concern over it.
No, no, sir. And Ms. Russell and I corresponded about that, and she is going to make sure it remains in the job description if that's what the board wants.
Okay. And was it two or was it three?
My apologies, it's three, sir.
Okay.
We currently require three years of teaching experience. Yes, sir.
Okay. I think that's a good number, and I think that those districts that have, have cheated themselves of the opportunity for principals to be in the classroom, that's the best place to, I think, to learn about leadership is to be in the classroom. And so if you can't lead a group of two-year-olds, then you don't want to lead anything else. So anyways, so thank you.
My pleasure.
That's a good point. We're moving it from policy to job description. Three years, right? All right.
It's always light in the job description in addition to policy.
Okay, thank you. Number four, revisions of policy EHAA Local Basic Instructional Program Required Instruction All Levels. Number five, revision to policy EBBC Local Special Programs Compensatory Accelerated Services. Number six, revisions to local EIE Local Academic Achievement Retention and Promotion. Number seven, revisions to policy FDE Local Admissions School Safety Transfers. Number eight, revisions to policy FEA Local Attendance Compulsory Attendance.
This isn't the same one. Have we got to FEC yet?
Let's see what?
So we have two for attendance, right?
We have FEC and FEA.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Revisions to policy FEC Local Attendance Attendance for Credit.
Yeah, so in the revision, in the corrected one that we just got, the principal or attendance committee may require verification from a healthcare provider in accordance with administrative regulations as a condition of classified an absence for personal illness as one for which they are, there are extenuating circumstances. Now, is this something that's coming down from Tasby that we need to, this needs to be written in that way? Because how do we know that all students have access to medical care?
First of all, let me clarify that, Mr. Safi, the reason why you have a version as a corrected version of the track changes, Mr. Safi alerted me to the fact that the version I included in the board book didn't track all the changes against the original. So you have a corrected version. What's in the board book as the clean version is what we're proposing. So I haven't changed anything from what you got of the clean version. To answer your question about the personal illness, the language, I don't believe it changed significantly. I'll take a look at it, but the intent is that the attendance committee may ask for documentation as opposed to just taking a student's word for it that they were ill. So they may ask for documentation.
And that may is so broad that you don't know as a parent when you may be the one to be selected for documentation. That's why I'm asking, is it something that we are doing as a district, or is this coming down from Tasby that it must read in this form?
No, it's not. It's been in there for a long time, and it is not coming down from Tasby, at least not recently. It may have come down from Tasby years and years ago, but not recently. There is now the new legislative change about a life-threatening illness, that if you have a life-threatening illness, then those days don't even get factored into the 90% rule, and those do require, under the legislation, those do require certain medical certification.
I just think, Ms. Austin, we need to revisit that wording, especially now during the pandemic. We know that students are getting more of an excused absence if they have, Brenda?
So remember that students that are out either positive or high exposure are in remote conferencing. So as long as they're logging on to remote conferencing, they're not being penalized attendance while they're counted present. So every school has a remote conferencing substitute that provides those services so that they continue, because you're right, 10 days, if you're out 10 days, that automatically takes you very close to the 90% rule. But as long as our students are logging on for remote conferencing, they're present. So it's not counting against them. Now, let's say they're too ill to partici, or participate even in remote conferencing, then absolutely, that's why the attendance committees and the principal's plan has the authority that's in the policy, and they take all that into consideration. So it's a committee, they bring, every child has a story on why they've been out or not out, and we go through, okay, tell us what's going on. Do we need more? Do we need less? Anything COVID-related, we are. anything COVID-related, we are being very flexible.
Yeah, I just think during now, the times have changed, and we don't know how long we'll be in this situation, and so now that we're looking at this, policy gives us the opportunity to make sure it fits what we, where we're at now at this time, and so I just think that we need to word it in a way that doesn't discourage parents from being afraid to come forward as to why their student was not present, and, and be honest, but they don't always have access to medical care, that's it.
So Ms. Lucero, are you, if I could get you to repeat that again, so you're saying you would like language that doesn't require verification from a medical, that, that the attendance committee cannot ask for that?
What I'm saying is if we can word it in a way that is not, that, that it's not going to against discourage parents from coming forward, for example, if they just don't have access to medical care, and their student didn't show up and they end up in court, I, I don't know what the situation might be, but I, and I would think we need to word it in a way that is, that is in line with where we're at with the pandemic, I don't know if that, how I can, I'm not an attorney, so I don't have the words to put forth.
In, in terms of, a couple of the things, this does provide that if you have an excused absence for an illness, and it goes to the attendance committee, that the attendance committee is supposed to count as days of attendance, excused absences. And so what is an excused absence comes under a different rule, I believe that's FEA. So if you'll give me a moment, I can pull up FEA and look at that, and perhaps get back to you in, in a few minutes on that.
Go ahead. Ms. Austin?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so earlier you said the corrected copy that we, that they just put on in front of us just a little while ago, just, that it was correct in the board book?
The marked-up copy, the one that shows the green and the blue and the red, is not correct in the board book, but the clean copy was correct in the board book. What we are proposing, the clean version of it was correct, just the tracked changes was not correct, it didn't properly pick up all the changes from the current to the proposed, but that's what you have now in your hand, is the corrected tracked change versions, it will show all the, it will mark all the changes. What you had in the board book did not correctly mark all the changes, but you had a clean version that is correct.
Yeah, I have a problem with that, you know.
Why don't we just move it into January and?
Yeah, let's just move it to January and give it more time.
And one, one thing that I will note is that in January, we will be convening the attendance committees to deal with the absences from the fall, and so they will be meeting by the end of January, so hopefully we can get this dress, addressed in, in time for that.
We want to make sure we give them clear, clear policies to, and we understand the policies before we put them out.
Yeah, getting this right beforehand, and it's hard to read like it is, so.
It is very confusing, and I appreciate that Mr. Safi did alert me to that a day or so ago, a couple of days ago, and I just wasn't able to get you the clean, the corrected copy any sooner, I apologize.
So we'll move this to January.
Yes, sir.
Policy item number ten, revisions of policy FFG locals.
Do we need to also, since FEA and is loosely associated with FEC or associated, should we move that to June, to January as well, or should we just leave it in, in this?
FEA?
Yeah.
Local?
Are we okay with that?
FEA is correct, and it just includes what's required by legislation, there was no specific change to it.
Oh, that's for the driver license.
No, no, the compulsory attendance, number eight, I'm sorry, sir.
That, that's, that's correct, it, it allows the, the excused absence for a driver's license.
To participate in that, for learners to obtain a driver's license.
Okay.
That's what it's saying, right?
Yeah.
So that, I don't see any problem with that one. It's just number nine. Number ten, revisions to policy FFG local student welfare, child abuse and neglect. Number eleven, revisions to policy FL local student records. Number, action items number one, 2022 internal audit plan review.
The only comment I had, and I don't know if those comments got out to the rest of the trustees, but I had expressed a concern, not a concern, asked for consideration from Champagne that the categories, what was it, the five categories that we, we do the, base the audits on, that we consider consolidating all the academics and instruction under one category, because that's kind of what we do. And so Champagne replied back that she would like to discuss that further, and this is not the time tonight to do it, I think that's kind of a lengthy discussion, but I asked her to, to consider that, and she's receptive to, to have any discussion with that. And so I'm not asking for anything to be done to, tonight with this, I mean, I have no problem with us moving forward on this tonight, but I'd still like to see that discussion, yeah, for the future.
Did you get that, Ms. Champagne, for future consideration?
Yes, sir, and I think for the current, so far historically, our plan has been the academic process or academic programs, we, when we do audit, we look at compliance, we look at financial management, we look at any coding or program implementation that affects the district funding, we look at from those standpoint, so basically, it's been considered through the current category of compliance and operation side, but it's a good, it's an interesting observation to put it out, but we need to think through more about how to regroup them. That means I also need to look into the audit process, how to define, if we look at academic, do we look at in addition to the financial impact, in addition to the coding funding, because the coding is from how academic takes, for example, special students, they need to follow IED plan, from IED plan, it dictates what kind of accommodation or instructional setting that need to be put in place, and we would follow the overlap students, LPAC dictates what kind of setting they need to have. Now, these, we do take care of those, I mean, review them to make sure from the compliance standpoint, from operational standpoint, and it doesn't name academic, but actually it's considered during the audit process, it's reviewed through those two, if you want to look at it as a category side, but we can, of course, different classification or different grouping should not affect the final goal that we try to accomplish. Basically, well, all the audits come down to make sure that students get the service based on the requirement, based on the best interest for the students, for their accomplishment, for their performance, because that's how our funding, most of them, either the formula funding, basic funding, or special fundings comes from. Does that make sense to you all?
Yes, but, but my, my comment was not because I, I have a concern about anything, my comment was I just wanted to, I apologize for this thing, I was to consolidate it or look at, organize it differently, so that the outside person who, who looks at this or might see it says, okay, this makes sense, okay? That's the only reason, but there's no issue, I have, matter of fact, I think our district does as, as good, if not better, job than most districts in, in serving all students, and so I, I don't have a problem with that.
If it's just a presentation, the reporting side, I think we can make any, as long as I understand what your observations are and what your expectations are, we can work, work on that and to restructure it, I don't think there's any problem about, I just need you to give me some time to, to understand.
Absolutely, and then that's, like I said, there's, there's no hurry on it, and then the other thing too, it would need to come back to, to the entire board to, for consideration.
Sure.
Mr. Ramirez, if I could also add that, part of some structures that we put in place, we have different task force, where we're, then, all sorts of high school, middle school, elementary, and what we do on our side too is we conduct compliance reviews, academic compliance reviews, so for example, right now, we're reviewing our Y codes and W codes on our dual credit side to make sure that the conversions were used. So from an academics, we created a team that is going out and making sure that the things we are asking for from the academic standpoint are happening through compliance reviews. Our next one will be to review our LEP, making sure that the kids are reviewing the academics, not so much the financial implications, but for us, it's the academic implications, making sure that what we say in policy is happening, and so we have a team that's going out to our schools and conducting those reviews.
Excellent, and again, I, I don't have any concern right now, I don't have any concern at all, I think we do things very, very well in this district. The only thing that I ever see or have seen over the last seven years is the occasional paperwork, SNAPU type thing, or how we're reporting things, that sort of thing, but, but the work is there, the, the service is there, and in many cases, the success is there as well, I, I'm good with all of that.
And for us, it was important that because academics is so complex, that the team that goes out understands, okay, what, what would they look for specifically, again, not from, coming from an academic standpoint and not the finance standpoint.
Correct.
May I ask? I'm sorry, go ahead. May I, I, I think one of the things, Ms. Champagne, is that in prior years, you only had as the categories under compliance, federal, state, and local, and so that sort of covers the universe of the regulations with which we need to comply, and so by adding academic compliance, obviously that steals something from the other categories, and so you never had this category up there before, you must have done it, but done it somewhere else, either within the federal, state, or local compliance analysis, or somewhere else in, in the different departments, or different programs, or different processes that you audited. So I think that's one of the questions, is that why now are you creating a compliance category for academics when it really overlaps with federal, state, and local policy compliance?
May I answer? I, I think that's the exact reason why I reply to Mr. Ramirez, that we do need to discuss more, because I, my biggest goal is we don't do duplicate work, like I always work with academic and finance people, I say, if you guys are going out, train them, try not to just go, if I do the audit, they don't need to do the same audit, we would target different areas, they are specialized in instruction, then that's their expertise, they should focus on how to place students once instructed, working again and supports, and I come in, it's more from the different aspect of the compliance, so we don't, we don't duplicate, and then Ms. Austin, Ms. Austin has a good point, that's what I say, we need to discuss more, and once I understand your expectations or your logics, I will reach out to Dr. Chakong, Mrs. Lieber, Mrs. Garcia, to make sure that we all work out the nice workflow that doesn't duplicate the effort of each other, does that make sense?
Yes, I'd like to say that, just to remind everybody, Champagne is under the direction of the school board, and if so, if she does cross certain areas, that's fine, I don't have any problem with that. I think that in the long run, the more comfortable we feel with her audits, the better we feel that we're doing our job up here, as far as, as, you know, I know that sometimes it's a little touchy, but Champagne does report to us, and so as far as your report, our audit plan, it has improved, well, I should commend you on the, on the plan. It has, it is something easier to understand and to read, and I think you've done very well with that, with your team, in bringing this, bringing this to the board, but other than that.
Thank you, we try hard.
Yes, I know, it's, it is hard, we're just reading through it, it's, it's, but it's clear-cut, it's, it's outlined and everything, so if we have any questions, we can always look into the audit plan, but that is, that is my comment on that, anybody else? Okay, so my recommendation is to talk to Mr. Ramirez and see how he would like to have, I don't have any problems with that, I think we all have, you know, if you have a good idea, hey, we go for it, you know, it's a. You'll figure it out, but I, I think you, talk to Mr. Ramirez and see how we can in the future integrate that as to what he's, he's wanting to do, and make it a little even better to understand the audit plan, okay?
I try.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Action item number two, modification of the 2021-2022 compensation plan, national year of the year's type in. Modif, action item number three, modification of the 2021-2022 compensation plan to implement perfect attendance type in and with ESSER funding.
I believe that's item three, that in speaking with trustee Ramirez, and in the absence of two trustees, he'd like to at least entertain moving it to January.
I have no qualms with that.
Was that number three?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. During that period, if there's additional information or anything that you'd like from us, Ms. Russell Garcia can put that together for you in any variation.
And I, and share with the board, please.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Action item number four, appoint or reappoint 2022-23 representative of El Paso Central Appraisal District, CAD Board of Directors. Number five, ratification of award of YSD contract number 20220114 with HAJA and Associates Incorporated. Okay, we have one item that was pulled, but the order of agenda has been approved, may I have an electronic motion, and a second. On the remaining consent agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by the administration. May I have a motion? It's not working.
I have, Ms., trustee Bustillos, who is the mover, and I have a second by Mr. Ramirez.
Mr. President, I move to approve. Mr. President, I move to approve the remaining consent agenda items listed on the agenda as recommended by administration. I'm sorry, but my screen is frozen. Can't vote, I can't vote.
Minus two. We can take an.
Monica? The, I'm looking over here at Mr. Haggerty's screen, it, his, it shows that he's present.
Yes, sir, and, and my computer's stuck as well, so we can take a manual vote?
Okay, motion has been made, we have a second by, who was seconded? Just the Ramirez. How do you vote, Mr. Ramirez?
Oh, yes. Yes.
Yes.
Hold on. Hold on, hold on, hold.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
I wrote yes. So five in favor and none opposed. Pull for consent item. For further discussion was item number two or three. Consent item number two, donation to Del Valle High School Girls Basketball Team.
Yes, I wanted to formally thank Ms. Irene Chavez for the donation and gifts and the amount of $5,000 to the Valle High School Girls Basketball Team. It's partnerships like this that make things happen at our our school district. So we appreciate appreciate the donation. Thank you.
Okay. May I have a, that was your motion, right?
I move to accept the donation.
May I have a second? Second. We have a second. Do you vote? How do you vote? Aye.
Aye.
Five in favor, none opposed. All right. Policy items. The order of agenda has been approved. I have an electronic motion and a second on the policy agenda items remaining on the agenda as listed by the administration.
President Ochoa, we did have a pulled item, number four, for the instructional calendar earlier. So if we can vote on number four, and we can take an electronic vote now.
We just, I thought we were going to move it.
For the instructional calendar?
No.
I believe the question was answered, and so it was not pulled.
It wasn't pulled, was it?
It was not pulled.
It wasn't pulled.
Okay.
He just made a comment on the instructional calendar, but he didn't make any motion to.
I had actually asked for it to be pulled so we could talk about it, but it didn't get pulled. It's still reflected on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
So it was only number two? Okay.
Excuse me. In the script, it showed it was pulled. So do you do you want to consider it pulled or do you not want to consider it pulled?
I don't want to consider it pulled. We, I mean, she wrote the script, but it didn't flow that way.
No one actually pulled it. All right. Thank you very much.
I think the script is just a script. It's what we conduct here is. Correct.
So we're on the policy items, right?
What page is that?
Page six.
Okay. Okay, policy items. The order of agenda has been approved, except for that one policy item that was, number eight?
Nine.
Nine, that was pulled. May I have an electronic motion and a second on the remaining policy agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by the administration. President Ochoa. Mr. Bustillos. I move to approve the remaining policy agenda items listed on the agenda as recommended by administration. We have a second by Ms. Lucero. Please cast your electronic votes. Results are in, five in favor, none opposed. We move on to our action items. Action item number one, 2022 internal audit plan review. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? If no further discussion, may I have a motion? President Ochoa. Mr. Rosales. No, no, you're you have to do it.
I move to approve the 2022 internal audit plan as presented by the internal auditor.
Would you turn on your mic, please? Mike?
I'll say it again. I move to approve the 2022 internal audit plan as presented by the internal auditor.
And we have a second by Mr. Bustillos. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast, five in favor, none opposed. Action item number two, modification of 2021-2022 compensation plan, national teacher of the year stipend. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? If no further discussion, may I have a motion? Mr. Bustillos.
President Ochoa, I move to approve the modification of the 2021-22 compensation plan to include the national teacher of the year stipend in the amount of $5,000.
Okay. And we have a second by Mr. Rosales. Please cast your electronic votes. Votes have been cast. We have five in favor, none opposed. Modification, number three, modification of 2021-2022 compensation plan to implement perfect attendance stipend with E S S E R funding is being moved to the January board meeting. Action item number four, appoint or reappoint 2022-2023 representative to El Paso Central Appraisal District CAD Board of Directors. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? No further discussion. May I have a motion? Ms. Lucero.
I move to appoint trustee Shane Hagerty as the 2022-2023 trustee to represent YSD on the El Paso Central Appraisal District CAD Board, beginning January 1, 2022, and running through December 31, 2023. And while he couldn't be here today, he wanted to let everybody know that he is honored and excited to serve the CAD Board representing our district. So thank you, trustee Hagerty.
Thank you, Ms. Lucero. It's been seconded by Mr. Rosales. Please cast all electronic votes. Votes have been cast, five approved, none opposed. Action item number five, ratification of award YSD contract number 20220114 with HA Gray and Associates Incorporated. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? No further discussion. May I have a motion? Mr. Ramirez.
President Ochoa, I move to ratify award of YSD contract number 20220114 with HA Gray and Associates Inc. for the cooling tower replacement project at Eastwood High School in the amount of $933,158.95 in contingent upon final negotiations and House Council review and Form 1295 Certificate of Interested Parties.
All votes have been cast. Results are five in favor, none opposed. Okay. Before adjourned, does anybody have anything that they want to say?
Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year's. Please get some rest. You certainly earned.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. Don't forget, we've got some goodies for you to take home, to load up.